Good evening, I would order this meeting of Winston-Salem City Council and ask the City Secretary to call the role, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio. Mayor Protem Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much, would you please join the City Council meeting in a moment of silence? Thank you, and as we stand to do the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd like to invite the Boy Scout Troop 910, St. Paul's Episcopal, Councilmember Clark's District there church there, and ask them to lead us in the pledge, if you would, you can stand right where you're at. Please join us.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Scouts, we're glad to have you with us today. May we have item, excuse me, recognize our Sergeant Orange, Lieutenant Horace Bryant. Thank you Lieutenant for being with us tonight. Maybe we have item H1.
Item H1, Resolution Recognizing the 2019 Carolina Thunderbirds. Whereas the Carolina Thunderbirds, in a partnership with Winston-Salem Fairgrounds Annex, were officially created as a team in 2016, as a part of the Federal Hockey League, and whereas the Carolina Thunderbirds played in their first ever game in October 2017, and held their first home game November 2017, and whereas the Carolina Thunderbirds played in the Commissioners' Cup Finals against the Elmira Enforcers in a best-of-five-game series, and whereas the Carolina Thunderbirds won Game Four in overtime to take the Commissioners' Cup title, which has not been in Winston-Salem for over thirty years, and whereas the Carolina Thunderbirds had thirteen sellout crowds averaging over two-hundred-and-seventy, two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty spectators per game, and whereas the Carolina Thunderbirds had a phenomenal season which included a twenty-four game winning streak, and whereas the Carolina Thunderbirds broke all team records and had an unprecedented seventy wins, and whereas the Carolina Thunderbirds were honored and congratulated during an NBC Sports Network televised NHL hockey playoff game, and whereas the twin archlights on US Highway 52 at Research Parkway will glow, will glow red, white, black, and gold in recognition of the Carolina Thunderbirds from May 7, 2019 through May 31, 2019. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Winston-Salem do hereby commend and congratulate the Carolina Thunderbirds on their Commissioners' Cup championship, and wish the team many more years of exceptional hockey playing.
Thank you, sir, motion.
So move.
Motion second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, I think we'll vote on it as well right there, we'll vote yes or no. Of course, that is unanimous. We delighted to see a number of fans out here tonight, and I'm going to present the resolution we have represented from the team here, if we can present some. All the fans standing up.
Yeah.
You make us very proud, and we'll be a part of our city, and we're glad to have you wonderful, see you, would you like to say a couple words? Good luck to you. You'll be alright.
I would just like to say thank you on behalf of the, you know, the Thunderbirds. The city has embraced us and taken us in, and we really appreciate that, and a lot of us have called this our temporary home during the season, and some our permanent home, and I'd like to say this is my newly adopted home as personally, as a Winston-Salem Fight Department member, so. I'm here as well now, and it's an honor, it's an honor as an organization, as a team, and as a player, and as a resident now, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We expect you to do the same next year.
Yep. No pressure.
No pressure. Tonight's agenda, the City Council's comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda, it's always a practice of this council to take the consent agenda to first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by committee of the City Council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedures. There'll be no discussion of the individual items on this agenda unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed on Wednesday at 9:30 a.m., as well as, well, that's the only time we're going to do it this week because we're a couple days behind. Copies of our agenda, as well as videos of our meeting are always available online on the city's website, and just select the watch meetings online option. Councilmembers, are there items you'd like to throw from the consent agenda?
C1.
C16.
C29.
There a motion on the ballot?
So move.
C, oh, did you say C29?
I've got 1, 16, and 29, is that what you got?
Did you get 1?
Uh-huh. Okay, we have a motion on the ballot.
So.
Motion second to approve the ballot. And all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes, anyone opposed, vote no. That's unanimous, thank you, Councilmember. So item C1, please.
Item C1, Resolution Authorizing Modification and Execution of a Lease for Surplus Space in the Union Station Building at 300 South Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, under the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 1608-272 located in the East Ward, recommended by Finance Committee.
Councilmember Cipio.
First I'd like to call in the District Committee Manager Damon DuKane to give us the status on that at this point in time.
Yes ma'am, good evening Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Burke, members of the City Council.
Good evening.
This morning I received an email from representatives from Elizabeth's Pizza who stated they desire to withdraw their interest in Union Station at this time.
Alright, so, I assume without objection, and Councilmembers, we will not taking action on this item that's being withdrawn. Alright, thank you, thank you Councilmember Cipio. Alright, item C16.
Item C16, Resolution Awarding Contract for Resurfacing City Streets, APAC Atlantic Incorporated Thompson Arthur Division, recommended by Finance Committee.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes, members, Mayor, members of Council, Mayor Joins, this item was heard in the Finance Committee meeting, it was unanimous, and at the time, there was some questions and information asked for, we did get some information from Mr. DuKane, but I felt like it was not enough information for me to make a decision on this contract. Over the years, Mayor Protem established the MWBE, and we have been working diligently with the disparity study coming and other things, I feel like the city in itself, we try to do the best we can, but I feel like as a council member, when a citizen comes to me, or any of us, and they have concerns that maybe they weren't either listened to, or treated fairly, or misunderstood, it's my job, as an elected official, to take time and be responsive to that citizen. So, members of the council and Mayor, I am asking for no consideration on this item at this time.
Okay, Councilmember, there's no consideration, so it will come back to this body at the next, uh.
Mr. Mayor, would you like for that to go back to Finance so we could review the things? Is that be better?
Okay, would you like to withdraw your no consideration?
No.
Well, we can run it through Finance without objection, it'll come back here next time.
Okay, good night, I'll take that.
Okay. So we'll put it on the Finance Committee meeting, and that meeting is June 10th.
Second Monday.
Here's the issue, no consideration means it comes back at the very next meeting of the City Council, which will be June the third, so, this reason, maybe if you don't mind, Councilmember, could you make a motion that we continue this to the second meeting in June, and then it go, and let it go through Finance, would that be acceptable?
Yes, I'll rescind my no consideration, and we'll move this to Finance meeting to be continued at the second meeting in June of the City Council.
Mr. Mayor. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay.
I do have a procedural concern, I understand the concern that's been raised, however, I think it's important that this matter of resurfacing the streets be done in a timely manner, so that we do not lose this season for paving, and I am concerned that if this is cycled multiple times through committee, that we risk losing that. Now, if it comes back to the second meeting in June, we will have lost some time, but not the season, however, if it comes forward again and is no considered at that time, and we bump it thereby to August, we have lost the summer construction season, losing part of it as it is, and I wonder if our colleague will commit to not no considering this matter.
And I will not, Councilmember Bessie.
Then I would, I would ask that it be, that the no consideration be made at this meeting, so that we can be assured of timely action in June.
I think we do have a motion to, you know, to the second meeting in June, you want to speak to that, Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I do, Councilmember Bessie, I applaud what you're saying, and I understand, again, not just being the council member, but the Chair of Public Works, but again, just like I, I've been known to do, and I will continue to do, when citizens bring things to us that deserves our attention for a minute, a two-week to three-week timeframe with the weather the way it is now, ninety-three degrees, no rain for weeks, I don't expect this is going to be a rainy season, and I'm not a rainy, a weather person, but I'm, again, my job says, as an elected official, that I have to be responsive to the citizens, you know, when they bring these issues to, and if everybody thinks that, and I don't see that because basically everybody's voted to go with what I suggested, I pulled back on the no consideration, but you to ask me to consider no consideration when depending on what facts I find, and what evidence of whatever that I find, documentation to bring back to this council, I, I can't do that, because then I won't be doing what I'm supposed to be doing.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor, in that case, I move no consideration. In that case, Mr. Mayor, I move no consideration on this motion.
Alright, so this will come back to the first meeting in June now, we'll have a chance to go through the fight ahead, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C29.
Item C29, Resolution Approving Naming of the GM at WMC CM Senior Neighborhood Center, located in the East Ward, recommended by Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
Councilmember Taylor asked for this, as well as Councilmember Cipio, so I'm going to recognize Councilmember Taylor first.
Well, thank you Mayor, first of all, I want to give honor to Councilmember Cipio who made this recommendation, this particular item is a resolution naming the SIM Center Gymnasium after a living legend, now, this particular gym is in the East Ward, but, you know, we call it affectionately the South Side, and growing up in that community, I'm Mr. Ben Pickett, you are indeed a legend, brother, you are a living legend, and, you know, growing up, you know, sort of in the SIM Center, the Boys and Girls Club area, you have touched hundreds, if not thousands, of lives with your Peace Wars, Peace Toys for War Toys initiatives, and just being hands-on, and being a father figure to many who had fathers, and for those who did not, a brother figure for those who had brothers, and many who did not, and I believe in giving people their flowers where they are alive, so, this isn't something I've heard, this is something I've seen firsthand, and I want to just pull this item to say thank you for your service to this community, I mean, the world, the state, and the city is a better place because you were in it, and you were on the grind every single day in this community, changing lives of young people, so thank you, and I think this is an honor well deserved.
Thank you. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I do want to make a motion that we approve this, because it's rare that we have residents who truly give from their heart, and love everybody that they come in contact with, Mr. Pickett has touched the lives of little children, when they're toddlers, big kids, the teenagers, even to the seniors, his dedication and service is what we call just over the top, and Ben, for me, it's an honor to give you your flowers, while you can see them and smell them, you have shown the path of true servant leadership to the community, and if people look at your life and walk in your steps, we will have a phenomenal community. I do ask the council to approve this resolution naming the Gymnasium at the SIM Center in honor of Mr. Ben Pickett.
Thank you, did have a motion, it's been seconded by Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Burke, I recognize.
Yes, I hear all of you talking about these nice things, I watched Mr. Sims grow from a child to a man in the Northeast Ward, I saw his mother raise her children, mostly as a single parent, when his father passed on. Some years ago, we were fortunate, this city, as one of our North Carolina League of Municipal Healthers meeting, I believe it was in Greenville, North Carolina, is that correct, Mr. Sims? And Mr. Sims, I knew him too. Mr. Pickett, and he was recognized because of the things you're saying today, and he shared what he had with these people from all around North Carolina, and those who were visiting from other places in the country, so what you're doing here today is wonderful, and it makes us feel good to have an example for young folks who can actually touch and speak and talk with him, so may God continue to bless you, even though you retired, you're still doing things.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Larson.
Oh, could I ask Mr. Pickett to stand up so everybody in TV land can see him, and give him a round of applause?
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes, anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous, congratulations, Mr. Pickett, I certainly concur with all the remarks that have been made tonight, would you like to say a word, Mr. Pickett?
Sure.
You're never without a.
He's never without a word. Never without a word.
I'll say this, given honor to God, I want to thank everyone here, Mayor, Cipio, all the council members, it's been a blessing, I grew up in this city, and I want to thank God for you all, I just love what I do for the city, with some recreation parks, it's just a, a love, I just have a love for it, I just want to thank you, I don't want to take no time but to thank you, thank you, I thank God for you all.
Thank you. Thank you. We now consider the general agenda, which is comprised of the following, we have an item related to appointments to boards and commissions, we have an item regarding the confirmation of an appointment to the Preside County City County Planning Board, as well as the public comment period. The public comment period is a time set aside for citizens to voice their opinions on matters that are germane to city government, and when the comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes for a comment, and we limit that to thirty minutes per time. May we have item G1, please.
Item G1, Mayor Protem Burke's Recommendations for Appointments to the Community Apairance Commission, John Coyne, Appointment Categorical Position, Term Expiring February 2022, Tacya Wilson, Appointment Term Expiring February 2022.
Your motion.
So move.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Not all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes, anyone opposed, vote no, that's unanimous, thank you very much, thank you, Councilmember. Item G2.
Item G2, Confirmation of Preside County Board of Commissioners Appointment of Jack Stillman to the City County Planning Board, Term Expiring February 2020.
Your motion.
So move.
Motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes, anyone opposed, vote no. That is unanimous, thank you, and I see Mr. Stillman, I think I saw him out there, there he is, Stillman, congratulations, thank you for your service. Point out was a formerly employee of the City of Winston-Salem for a few years. And now item G3.
Item G3, Public Comment Period.
Yes, as I said, this is a time once a month that we invite citizens to speak to the City Council on matters that are germane to city government, if you would give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes, you'll see a timer up on the podium there. First person to sign up is Jordan Gooch.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Burke, City Council Members.
Good evening.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the Winston-Salem Ambassadors, as the inaugural Chairman of the Board for the Winston-Salem Ambassadors, I was humbled to be involved in the creation of a genuine grassroots, citizen-led movement that is organically representative of our diverse community, creating a platform that facilitates education about and engagement in our growing community. Ambassadors show them how to play a proactive role in our community, something that until the ambassadors were formed, many people in our community didn't know avenues about how to be involved and be engaged. Winston-Salem Ambassadors are a leader in community inclusiveness and innovation, so much so that many other older organizations have borrowed ideas originated by the ambassadors, sometimes words for word off their website, and other social media platforms, Mackenzie Cates Allen and the Ambassador's Board of Directors have actively pursued a proactive series of engagements with the community, choosing to lead by positive example in a world that too often relies on delayed reactionary response. When Second Sundays on Fourth organizers decided they no longer wanted to run the event themselves, their first call was the Winston-Salem Ambassadors, they saw the value in an organization that promotes inclusiveness and lives it every day, and is made up of folks who have a passion to promote the wonderful opportunities the system and the surrounding area provide, and a group who are genuinely diverse, brought together by their call to public service, and a love of our great community. As you know, the Winston-Salem Ambassadors have applied for a grant, and costs narrowed down, we, for a welcome center that could serve well over six thousand people a year, would start at twenty-five thousand dollars, a small fraction to put a lot of other organizations get, I believe approving this grant allows folks a greater opportunity to meet passionate Winston-Salem Ambassadors who are representative of our growing city, as we move forward in this exciting time of development and regrowth. Leaders build other leaders, and I believe that our strong leadership that has brought us to this time of great change and growth in our city's history, has also created an environment of civic engagement that has fostered the creation of real grassroots community engagement, of people by the people for the people, and Winston-Salem Ambassadors is leading the charge. I believe it's a direct investment in our city, and more importantly, it's an investment in what I think it means to have a proactive engaged community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Whitney Sockwell.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Burke, council members, staffs, and citizens, my name is Whitney Sockwell, and I am here to speak in support of Mackenzie Allen Cates and the Winston-Salem Ambassadors. As an actress getting ready to travel the country on tour, I feel it is very important to elevate the representation of Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Mackenzie and the Winston-Salem Ambassadors have a concrete plan to do just that. As you know, the ambassadors wish to create a welcome center where anyone is welcome to come in and be plugged into what's happening right here in our city, and with the ambassadors, and they figured out how they can best thrive here, but in the next five to ten years, the Winston-Salem Ambassadors also plan to increase awareness of Winston-Salem regionally and nationally. Doing so will allow major employers, businesses, and entrepreneurs, as well as universities, colleges, to attract the best talent to our city, and having the ambassadors will also help keep that talent. As representatives at the closest level, you, the council, have the responsibility to do what your contentious wants. When those desires align with what's best for our city in a cost-efficient way, this should be enhanced without fail. What you have in Winston-Salem Ambassadors should not only be represented, respected, but also admired, but brought to fruition. In examining other proposals bought before council, this one seems inclusive, smart, and innovative. If you choose to fund any of it, the welcome center would be a great place to start. I encourage you to think about finding room in the budget, even if it's by moving a few things around, the non-total profit contributor section, that way, many of the entities will still receive a majority of their funding, and so will the ambassadors. Ultimately, in comparison to the large numbers of some of these audacious proposals, twenty-five thousand is very doable. We cannot always do what we've always done, and this yet new logical plan aligns with the city's strategic vision, let them help you move forward in a smart way into our future. Thank you for your time, attention, and consideration.
Thank you very much. Dolly Hassan.
Dolly Hassan, 5116, Red Road, Winston-Salem, and I'd like to thank you Mayor and the City Council for hearing my comments tonight in reference to the city resurfacing contract. I remember when the city was advocating these bonds, and how it was going to create local jobs, and come to find out, with this particular contract, the contractor is almost reversing what this City Council had put in place some time ago, to ensure minority or African-American participation in the city resurfacing contracts. Historically, we were getting absolutely zero funds from these contracts. In order to level the playing field, the council decided to pull that item out of the contracts and let the local African-Americans bid on it. I'm not saying it should go to any particular contractor, but we do look forward to come to one of the local African-American contractors. And to date, my wife's company has been doing these contracts directly for the city, and this last past resurfacing contract for the same contractor that just won this particular contract. We're simply saying that the contractor had planned to use a company out of Graham, North Carolina, and we were saying that it would make more sense to us, as people who live here, paying taxes here, that this council would stand by its word in saying that local contractors would be utilized for as if qualified, certified, and available, but that's the case here. This contractor won the contract by being the only bidder, we were the only subcontract bidder from Winston-Salem as well. It shouldn't take no two or three weeks, because the outcome would still be the same, they were only prime, and we were the only sub, and to make matters worse, we would hope that this council will help and continue to help the, to ensure that minority contractors get our fair share of these contracts, and again, historically, it's not been the case, we usually end up with maybe one or two percent out of the city dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan.
So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tammy Lawson.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Burke, and council members.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, I'm Tammy Lawson, 55 Caris Brook Lane, I'm here tonight as an ambassador of the Winston-Salem Ambassadors. I, I discovered the ambassadors through social media, and I decided to apply to become an ambassador because I was looking for an opportunity where I could connect to and impact people in my own community, where I live and where I spend most of my time. I travel all over the world for my job, for my career, and everywhere I go, people want to show me their city, show me their country, and they want to show me what their city has to offer, and they're so excited and enthusiastic about it. I've seen a lot of really cool places, cultural compelling places, and I still, I'm so excited every time I come home to Winston-Salem. every time I come home to Winston-Salem. I choose to make Winston-Salem where I live, and I intend to stay here. I just love it. We have so many great things. So what I've learned about the Winston-Salem ambassador is that the organization is that it's all about people and that the people, that's our greatest strength, that's what we believe. And Mackenzie Cates Allen and the board and all of my fellow ambassadors, we have chosen to invest in and continue to invest in and connect with people through relationships. We think this enhances each other's lives, our own lives, and of course, that turns into enhancing the lives of Winston-Salem and the community itself. Many people from different backgrounds and walks of life will be able to utilize the Winston-Salem ambassador organization and benefit from everything we have to offer, and we think we are a great candidate for funding from the city of Winston-Salem. We would like to expand our presence. We would like to share our enthusiasm. I would love for people to feel the same way about Winston-Salem when they come here that I do when I go to another community somewhere far away. So I support the Winston-Salem ambassadors organization, and I hope that you do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Duann Allen?
Good evening, Duann Allen, P.O. Box two-eight-four-two-seven-one-oh-two, President of Action for Now Incorporated. On the city council website, the city council is responsible for adopting and providing for all ordinances, rules and regulations as necessary for the general welfare of the city. The mission statement on the website states, "The city of Winston-Salem provides quality, affordable services that ensure the health, safety and well-being of citizens while collaborating throughout the community to ensure its economic, social and environmental vitality." The city's vision, a municipal government deserving, deserving the public confidence that provides excellence and innovative services and is an active and cooperative partner in creating a vital community. The city's values, openness, integrity, equity, accountability, teamwork, respect for all citizens and fiscal soundness. Apparently, these values, mission and vision does not apply to the city government of Winston-Salem, nor to some of our elected officials or some of our city personnel. The First Amendment of the Constitution gives one the right to have freedom of religion, religious choices, freedom of speech, to freely assembly and to petition the government. With that being said, let me read the definition of what corruption is again. Corruption is the abuse of entrusted power for private gain. It can be classified as grand, petty and/or political. It is a form of dishonesty or criminal activity undertaken by a person or organization entrusted with the position of authority. Winston-Salem is woke, and the people have had enough. There will be no more going alone to get along. We have some mighty fine people who do work for the city of Winston-Salem. We really do. Unfortunately, they're silent. They have no choice. They're threatened, they're intimidated with their job or trying to keep their job. We're going to take care of that. We have some serious issues within city hall, and I'm just here to say that once again, change is coming. Change is already here. Thank you.
Teresa Krenzer, excuse me.
I'm Teresa Krenzer, and I live at forty-sixty-one Arden Street in Clemens. Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tim Burke and council members. I'm here tonight as an ambassador for the Winston-Salem ambassadors. I discovered the ambassadors through Kristen Williams at K-ten Yoga Co-op, and we do have a very rich yoga community here in Winston-Salem, and I own a small business that provides those services as well. And she graciously offered to have me attend the annual meeting in January at the Winston Company Museum, which I think is a pretty fabulous asset to the community. What I heard from the speakers and the people I met matched my passion for the city that I now call home. I applied to become an ambassador because it is my mission to share all the amazing places and things to do with those that might be coming to Winston-Salem for the very first time. I want to help the city be a place where people come to visit and hopefully fall in love with it like I did at the end of 2011 after moving here from Syracuse, New York. Go Orange. I can't even believe how far we have come in the last eight years, and it's truly remarkable. As a small business owner, I feel a hundred percent supported by the community I love, and I never feel alone here. I believe not only in what the Winston-Salem ambassadors are doing, but that they can and are helping the city of Winston-Salem. For a person like me who is not from around here, I would have loved to have found the ambassadors when I first arrived. They exude welcoming. They don't just preach it, they live it. The ambassadors and their mission, which is not just to increase awareness of Winston-Salem, but to welcome all, it is not just the right thing to do, it's the smart thing to do. This organization truly gives us an edge over other cities. We can only go up from here. Mackenzie and the board have stated and expressed desire for ambassadors from all wards, including East Winston, and ambassadors of all ages, nations, races and interests. The Winston-Salem ambassadors believe that we are better together. I believe we are better together, and I urge you, city council and the budget and evaluation staff, to find room in the budget to fund the Winston-Salem ambassadors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mackenzie Cates Allen?
Mackenzie Cates Allen, thirty-four ninety, Prigen Ridge Drive, Winston-Salem, two-seven-one-two-seven. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Burke and esteemed council members. Thank you so much for hearing from the ambassadors tonight. I wasn't a hundred percent sure what all they were going to say. I am president of the Winston-Salem ambassadors, and I love this city. Clearly, all of the ambassadors love this city. We have been around now for more than two years and together have learned so much. After people understand what we do, one of the first questions they ask is, do you work with the city? And my answer has typically been yes. They know what we're doing, and many of them are supportive. And I would love to definitively be able to say, yes, the city supports the Winston-Salem ambassadors, especially as we support the city. We have applied for funding for the nonprofit entity process, which we participated in for the first time. And as always, the first time for something is a learning experience in a big way. I respect your hard-working staff so very much, and applaud the efforts of both your staff and the Community Agency Allocation Committee for their work. None of it is easy. I do feel that several items of the process could be examined and improved. As your Citizens Budget Advisory Committee recommended, citizen engagement is crucial. I would recommend first that more than one technical workshop be offered, and second, that agencies be allowed to speak on their proposals before it's too late. As I have been told, if it's not recommended by the committee, it is very unlikely that we will recommend anything different. The CAAAC committee makes black and white recommendations on the black and white proposals, but if we do not allow additional explanation before it's too late, those who can't write the exact right words may not stand a chance. Third, there was no specific communication to the nonprofits during the CAAAC meetings that they were happening, but even if we attended, we weren't allowed to speak on record. Are we then supposed to approach members outside of the committee? Is that allowed? Is that okay? I want to do the right thing, and I'm sure that others do as well. And last, most proposals that have been funded in the recent past were recommended to continue, and I would like to see more in-depth the reasoning behind that, as I know you agree, we should never be complacent to just keep things as they have been. And in listening to this council, it seems that these grants should really give the most bang for the buck. Our organization aligns with many of the strategic plans of the council, and the welcome center is an opportunity for anyone to come in and be plugged into whatever applies to them. The most important part of our proposal to the city is the welcome center, as we can work on the ambassador's part separately. Last week during our pop-up outside, we had twenty people come speak to us in three hours, seven black males, five white, three Hispanic males and five women. That was three hours, and just imagine if that was offered three hundred days or more a year. We're really excited about Winston-Salem. The possibilities are right here, right now, and I know you're ready. Thank you all for all of your hard work, because I know you guys have a lot going on. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak during the public comment period? Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period, and with Mayor, Councilwoman Park.
Just real quickly, we did introduce the city budget last Thursday. This coming Thursday, in two days, at five o'clock, we will have our second meeting of the finance committee devoted specifically to the budget. That's this Thursday at five o'clock. And at seven o'clock, that same evening, this coming Thursday, we'll have a public comment period for anyone who wishes to speak. So I just offer those two meetings to you, and then next week, we will also meet on Thursday as well at four o'clock. But anyway, two meetings this week, both Thursday, one five o'clock, one seven o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Burke?
Yes, mayor members of the council. I do hope when citizens come down to speak that we all hear them. We have citizens who can agree and disagree. We're not perfect, and we need to have our minds open to hear what they have to say. And I would hope that the city manager will follow up with department heads to make sure they have meetings with the citizens, because sometimes it takes, it takes having that push forward to come to stand before people to talk about the strengths and weaknesses of a group. And we are not perfect. And when I hear you talk about some things we ought to do, I feel that there are some things we need to do. And I would hope, as I said again, that the city manager and his staff will seriously take everything that we hear as being very important. And to the ones of you who are the ambassadors, when you say you love this city, I wasn't born here, but I sure love it too. And I want to know, when I first came here, I lived in the area where Winston-Salem State is located, on Bargrave. From Bargrave, I moved to Atkins and Wallace and Atkins Apartments, and from there, I moved to Bruce Street. And then I worked at Big Old Fourteenth Street when I first met that young lady there. She was in, when I first started, she was in the third grade, next door to my class. She was very good, and the leadership rose thin. And then there were fifty-some people working at Fourteenth Street School, and I got along with all of them, because I would say, yes, that's a nice lady, nice man. Someone said, why do you always say they're nice? I'd say, you think I'm going to let a sister or cousin beat me up? I say, they're nice, because that's the best thing to say about people. But I want to say, we are a good city, whether some think it or not. And as I said, when we had the dedication of the parliament and when Representative Wumble spoke about this city, and I said that we, we have had every person on this council, for anything that was significant, meaningful, with diversity, we've had, most of the time, one hundred percent, one hundred percent agreeing with the things that we have been doing to move people forward. And I'm going to close by letting you know something big is going to happen in Winston-Salem on June the first. The Chronicle is doing the recognition of its citizens. And we have two people from this family. One, Councilwoman Adams, lifetime achievement, and Mr. Rollins. He will be recognized as, there were four men I saw, and I don't know if they're going to recognize all four of you, just one of you, one of the Men of the Year or the Man of the Year. So I think it's good when we take time to say to each other, congratulations, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burke. Motion to adjourn, please.
The move.
Motion second to adjourn. All voters in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, no.